Yep.
Is that working? I'll let you get back in place. Alright, is everybody ready? Alright, I have five, I have five fifty, I will call the meeting to order if everybody would stay in for a moment of silence and then we'll wait. If you face the line. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, for the quarter, if you would call the roll, please.
Board Chair Laura Harrison, here. Board Vice Chair Jeremy Burnett.
Here.
Keith Acton.
Present.
Deborah Thomas.
Hi there.
Michelle Childs.
Here.
Superintendent Horrell.
Here.
Um, we do have a quorum, as everyone knows, this is our work session, so there will not, it will not have as formal of a meeting. Um, so I will hold off to do the chair's welcome until the actual business meeting. And what, and Superintendent Horrell, will you lead us through our agenda please?
I certainly will. Uh, we do give the opportunity for public comments, even at work sessions.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, next item.
Uh, next item, we have our report, starting with the legislative representative update.
Ms. Childs.
The legislature is not in session, so I do not have a report. I suspect after, well, we'll talk about the agenda of the legislative, um, resolutions, but, um, after we get some more information from TSBA convention, we'll have a little bit more information on where to go with that.
Thank you, Ms. Childs. Next item.
Next item is the superintendent's report, and, uh, first I'll say that, uh, we had some issues with the streaming today, so we are recording this on, uh, a cellphone, and we'll get that uploaded to the website as soon as we can tomorrow. Did have a few things I wanted to share with the board. Uh, got a couple of our, uh, of board liaisons have gotten to work on some issue, uh, items that we've talked about. We have, uh, begun, begun meeting with our sponsorship committee and, uh, have a great group of folks and are looking forward to putting together some, uh, plans for kind of big-ticket sponsorships of, uh, of, of areas around our campuses that we feel like, uh, might be, um, marketable. Um, and so we're, the, the hope is that we would get these in place, uh, for the start of the following school year. So we're putting some information together, uh, right now and, and may be able to start soliciting some, um, larger sponsorships, uh, for the second semester of this year. Also, as the board knows, have started work on our five-year strategic plan. We do have a survey out, we've had over a hundred and eighty-five responses to the survey already, which is a pretty good, uh, I feel like, response. Uh, very, interestingly, so far, uh, very evenly split between, uh, parents at LES and LPS, and, uh, even though those, these numbers are lower, between staff members at LES and LPS. So it does seem to be reaching the variety of folks that we'd like it to reach. And, uh, this, thanks to Ms. Thomas for her work on that. We're also working on a, uh, a student survey that might be appropriate for our older students to give some feedback that would be helpful. And just review with the community and with the board. The hope in this, uh, with this first survey is to get very broad themes, just to kind of get some senses of, uh, what are the areas that we need to drill down on and, uh, focus on a little bit more. Uh, there will likely be further surveying and focus groups and feedback, uh, from individuals before we put the plan together. But the timeline is, uh, that, uh, after a board retreat where the board gives the final stamp on what the strategic planning needs to look like, then, uh, hopefully the board would, uh, take a vote to approve that in June, and then our five-year strategic plan work would begin earnest, um, at the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which is the beginning of the next five years. So exciting, uh, to, to get that work done and, and certainly get some good rich feedback already. Uh, a lot of folks have probably seen the news on, uh, A through F letter grades being finalized. This is something that this board has been aware of and has been talking about for, uh, at least the last four years, maybe five years. Um, this, this actually is, is not a new initiative, and it is something that the Lakeland Board of Education and many other boards of education have taken positions against with the idea that a single letter grade for a school, um, does not tell the story of that school. Uh, there's been a lot of confusion and debate over how that letter grade will be determined. Um, and there was a plan in place that had been agreed upon, that, uh, our understanding is, um, superintendents and directors of schools, uh, was going to go in place this November, and the new commissioner came in and set up a new, uh, procedure, and we wound up with a brand-new A-through-F grading, uh, um, formula. So there's still some parts of it that we, we don't understand, and we're trying to get some, uh, explanation. We do know that it's going to be heavily weighted towards achievement with fifty percent of the grade being achievement, forty percent will be T-VAS or growth measures, and then there's ten percent, this is the one with the most, I think, mystery to us, of subgroup performance. It is supposed to be the T-VAS group of the lowest-performing twenty-five percent student subgroup. Um, and we, we don't know how to calculate that yet, so we're, we're trying to find out what that is. Uh, but very frankly, I'll, I'll just reiterate what this board's position has been, that we don't think that a single letter grade, grade is appropriate. Um, we have, uh, requested to no avail, and our legislators, um, not require this, but they have. It was actually, uh, passed, like I said, some time ago, and it's just taking effect. So, um, it, it, that, that story will be out there at some point, but, um, we will, uh, we'll see what that winds up looking like once the final calculation is shared with us. Uh, want to give everybody an update on the construction projects that are going on right now. Uh, we're expecting the final surface coat of asphalt at the, uh, annex, parking lots and access road to be installed next week, at least that's what I was told today by the site superintendent. Uh, just about, uh, every other aspect of that project is done, there's a little more sod that's going in, uh, some, uh, lighting poles and things that are, that are going in, but I expect that to happen soon. We're hoping literally any day to get the permit, um, from, uh, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation that will allow us to start on the campus drive extension. Um, we, we really do expect that to come in this week after, uh, having the thirty-day waiting period for comments and feedback. Um, so hopefully that will happen. And if that happens, at this point, the timetable for completing the work is, we think, sometime in March. Um, our actual deadline to get campus drive extended is not until, um, basically August, but, uh, we're hoping to have it done in March. Uh, we have requested permission for flashing school signs on US seventy, uh, for arrival and dismissal. That is a T-dot, um, road, so we, we would have to get permission to do that, and we're hoping that that comes through. But just want the, the board and the public to be aware that we are, we're making that request, um, as we speak. Uh, I, I want to give a note on the soccer field expansion. We're very happy with the sod installation there, I think it's really going to be a nice facility. The, uh, Mads has already, um, uh, sanded that field, um, the top rested, um, and the purchase order has been submitted for three hundred bleacher seats to go there, the concrete pad is already there, but, um, and the scoreboard's been moved over from when it used to be at, uh, the football field, so I think that's going to be a really nice facility, uh, once, once all the work there is done. Uh, our next construction project, the public notice for our district office, uh, bid was posted on Friday, uh, so we're looking forward to hearing from contractors as that project moves forward over the next, uh, month or so. So moving off of the construction project, uh, our Lakeland School System audit has been completed. It hasn't been written up, but the auditors have left, um, our office. Um, that audit, uh, was the fastest audit that, um, they have ever completed of Lakeland School System at the central office. It was only a week and a half, and said they believe this was one of the fastest audits that they've ever done. And they meant that as a compliment, and that's a compliment to Jesse Rosales and Amanda Kelly, our finance department, who were just prepared and have everything where it needs to be and answer questions and take care of business, and, uh, we got a lot of compliments there. Uh, I also want to note, and, uh, this is a compliment to Stephanie DeWitt, who's one of our, uh, uh, technology support technicians and also handles our assets. For the first time ever, there was zero errors on the asset portion of the audit. And the assets is literally everything that comes into our building, and if you can go back to a year ago when we were loading things into the high school and every other building on campus, it was a massive flow of items, uh, being paid for in a number of ways, and she just handled it, uh, apparently perfectly. So we want to compliment her there as well. There is, uh, we're, we're obviously preparing for next year and adding the eleventh grade. There's some surveying out, uh, for various grade levels regarding demand for different courses that have started. Uh, don't panic if, if you, your child hasn't gotten one yet, but those conversations are happening. Uh, Ms. Jackson, our, uh, high school counselor is, and Ms. Decker are kind of leading the charge there and getting some good useful data. We're definitely aware and are already discussing, uh, what we know is the demand for, uh, dual enrollment and AP classes and dual credit courses, so that's a, a big part of the conversation, for sure. Uh, hoping again to get a head start on the hiring early in two thousand twenty-four, so, uh, just looking to identify the positions that will be necessary, uh, as we expand one more grade level. Just a brief update, the volunteer of the year nomination form is out, uh, we are sending out a reminder to get that. The, uh, the deadline is, uh, early December for the volunteer of the year nomination. And, uh, then I want to give a brief update on the Synthegix implementation, which is our rapid-response system. Um, the, uh, network rocks are going in on November twentieth, um, and then Synthegix team will take over, and they're, uh, they're hoping to, um, do their work at the end of December and, um, that they can start training at the start of the next semester. So, uh, had a, had a little delay there with an upgrade to the equipment, which was a good thing. We got better equipment than we were going to, but it did slow us down just a little bit. So, uh, as always, a number of things going on, that's just the tip of the iceberg, but, uh, if there are any questions, I'll certainly take them.
Um, I have, I just said, do you have one question about the strategic survey that's currently out there? What is the close date of it? Oh, thank you, Benjamin, what is the?
I did not put a close date on it, uh, we're just going to kind of let it ride for a little bit and then, uh, put out an announcement once we.
So maybe we'll say, oh, we're going to close it in three days, but at some point we'll make an announcement where it won't be like, oh, I forgot to do that.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll give them a little heads up.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Yes, that's fine.
So, and I don't remember if you said this already, but, um, do we know if the soccer field will be ready for spring? Or like, at what point might we know that it's not ready or it is ready?
If it's, the, the, what they have said is, if it's playable at all in the spring, it would likely be postseason. So it will not be available for the.
That's what I thought, but I just.
And that's been the plan for the pandemic, yes, but that is correct, and, uh, Coach Fozzie and the other coaches are aware of that. But if everything goes perfectly, it may be if we, you know, made it into the postseason, that, that the grass would start growing in time and they could get a cut on it and make it nice, so.
And more questions for the superintendent? Hearing none, next item.
Uh, next item is the, uh, monthly financial summary. Uh, you do have the September summary, we will add the October summary, as we usually don't for the work session.
I clicked on the wrong thing while responding to.
Any discussion on this item, any question? Alright, hearing none, next item.
Uh, next item, uh, we will skip the approval of the agenda since it's a work session, uh, we do have several items on the consent agenda.
Is there any items that on the consent agenda the board would like to pull off? Or for next week, and certainly you can, you can do that again next week at the same time, I'll offer the same. Or is there any item you would like to discuss any further on the consent agenda?
One quick question, just for clarification, because I know we talked about maybe marked accents. I do see that now. Did we, or, do we ever mark just accent or accent excuse, or is that a different committee or different board I'm serving?
I think it's a different board you've served on, yeah.
Alright. That is a little bit.
Right, thank you.
Alright, so any other discussion or questions on the consent agenda items?
Would like to add, uh, under, uh, number two and number three. Yeah, number two and number three to the consent agenda for next week, that, that would be under discussion action.
Alright, is there, Dr. Horrell, do you want to discuss these before we get there, or do you have any item, you want to wait till we get there?
I'm happy to, since it's a work session, I'm happy to, to put and talk through it, if you'd like to.
Okay, that is great.
Yeah, um, because actually the, uh, on your agenda, I think it's been updated, but Mr. Adler's going to present at the actual board meeting, not at the work session. Uh, item two is our approval of the tenure recommendations, and, uh, we've got a great group of teachers here, a, a big list from Lakeland Preparatory School.
I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt, I apologize. Uh, I was looking online at the LOE, and that, I did not look down here, so.
Uh, yeah, so I think it's, actually should be one and two, but yes, based on, you're talking about the paper agenda. Yes.
I apologize, I was like.
No, you're fine.
Number one is listed as tenure list here, I'm concerned to, no, no, that's only, November twenty-twenty-three budget amendments and twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-four LSS board calendar. Those were the two I was, uh, requesting, yeah.
Gotcha, yeah, the budget amendments are fairly typical, they're all grant-related, uh, so I think that's a great one for the consent agenda unless there are questions. The board calendar has to do with, uh, a conflict with the TSBA legislative, yeah, thank you for the correction.
Um, I did have a question about the budget amendment. I know, um, Ms. Burnett have brought up a few months back, we had talked about we need to pre-fund, um, potentially the purchases, I think it was when Ms. Terrell, when Dr. Terrell was here, um, the purchases this one year, like something we would have to do for one years for our loading. Is that part of this budget amendment?
No.
Um, I, I certainly would like to see a budget with it included if that is possible in, um, and I'm fine with putting it on the consent agenda, but I would like to see a budget amendment with that front-loading. I know that there's some, still some surveying going on, so, um, and so I realize the amount might have to be tweaked or whatever when we get more finalized numbers in January, but I would at least like to see a budget to where that would start, if that's possible.
We can, I think, I think the thought was we were hoping to get the final audit back so we could see what the fund balance situation is, because that, this would absolutely have to be a fund balance, uh, deduction, and I know they're, um, but, but, at the discretion of the, uh, we need to make sure we can pull from it from what's in the fund balance, but, uh, we could, we could, uh.
Can y'all review that, and, and we can certainly leave it on the consent agenda, and if we need to, we can pull it off, uh, if there's any discussion.
Are you saying you'd like to see that at the business meeting?
Yes, if that's possible.
It, it'll be a, it'll be a stab.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I understand that, I understand that we're, we would be benchmarking off of last year's number and not have the final numbers from this year. I totally understand that, but I'd like to at least, from a position standpoint, and also based on another, another item I have down here, I'd like to see the whole budget together, um, if that's.
Get that together, yeah.
Sorry, if that's, okay, so we, so we're, we covered the budget amendments and the school board calendar, is that the right two?
Right.
Okay, so those two will be on the consent agenda for next week, but we.
Three and four.
Three and four, yeah.
Three and four on the paper.
Yeah.
Two and three on the, online, I'll get it online. Oh, okay, so, I guess that puts us back up to, now you can talk about the tenure.
Got a great group of students, a lot of these started, uh, well, excuse me, teachers, uh, starting with Lakeland Preparatory School. Uh, typically the way tenure recommendations go is you have to have five years of what the state calls successful, uh, experience with the school system. In the last two years, you have to have a four or a five on your, uh, your LOE, which is your final score for your evaluations. Um, the, this, for this with the teachers, this was six years after they started, but, um, the, the, because COVID shut down, um, so much of the evaluation system gave, uh, teachers the opportunity to nullify, um, some of those are just coming in. So these are, uh, as you can see, like I said, a great group of teachers, both from LPS and LES. Uh, they have been recommended by their principals, and, uh, I'm certainly endorsing those recommendations, so they would come before the board to be approved at the, uh, business meeting.
Is there any discussion on this item?
I, I would just say, I think the only reason that, that I wouldn't say listen to the consent agendas, I'd like to make sure we have a sustainable level to recognize that achievement, not to make any teachers nervous that their name is going to have to be pulled or anything.
I think that's appropriate, yeah.
Um, so I know in the past we've had a reception, uh, would that be at the December meeting? Okay, just for clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, hearing no discussion on this item, the next item, number five on the paper.
Thank you, the next item is discussion on staff bonuses, which is your item, it's urgent.
Yes, so I asked, um, Dr. Horrell to put this item on here, um, for us to be able to, um, give him direction to bring, actually, I'd like to, for him to bring a proposal to our next meeting, al- along with any necessary budget amendments, um, on potential staff bonuses based on, but feedback, individual feedback, I'd like board members to reach out to Dr. Horrell individually this week and give any feedback you have, um, and put together a proposal for us to look at next week along with the, any necessary budget amendment for that.
We're happy to do that, yeah.
Is there any discussion or questions on that?
Would, would, just for clarification, Dr. Horrell, you have some sort of framework already that when we, hoping to have a conversation with you, you can say, here's, here's option A, here's option B, here's option C, give me feedback on that.
Correct, we've got some ranges that we can, we can discuss.
Alright, great.
Alright, so that will not be on our consent agenda next week, that will stay on the regular agenda. Any objection to that? Alright, hearing none, next item.
Uh, next item is the election of the legislative representative.
So we would not do that till our business meeting, so we will just leave that in the placeholder for our next meeting.
If I could, I'd like to ask.
Yes.
Ms. Childs, is that something you'd be interested in doing again? Alright.
Do you nod at any affirmative for those of you that are listening and not watching?
Alright, so that will stay on our regular agenda for next week. Next item.
Uh, the next item is the, uh, Lakeland Board Self-Evaluation Results.
Dr. Horrell, do you want to present maybe?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, sure, I'll, I'll just give the, the background. This is a, a requirement of, uh, state board policy, or, uh, sorry, this is a requirement of boards to do a self-evaluation. It's part of, uh, therefore part of Lakeland School System policy, and, uh, the board determined, uh, a few months ago, as they have annually, to utilize the TSBA self-evaluation, uh, instrument. And what the TSBA self-evaluation instrument asks board members to do, uh, individually, is, uh, basically assign a score between one and six of, uh, various aspects of boardsmanship, and they're asked to evaluate, uh, where they think the board is at the moment and how important that item is, and then it does a discrepancy analysis, uh, to see which are the biggest areas of strength, uh, and, and areas of focus for the board. Um, that, at least from, from my reading of it, uh, once again, I think this, uh, this self-evaluation, uh, reveals this to be a board that takes the job very seriously and, uh, is, is actually fairly close. There aren't a lot of huge discrepancies, um, between, uh, what they feel like the board is doing and the importance of those things. Uh, what the evaluation listed was the six items with greatest success in terms of, uh, those discrepancies is that the members of the board refrain from speaking for the board on issues on which the board has no official position. Individual board members avoid making excessive personal requests from staff. Our board understands the need to influence statewide legislation, works diligently to develop a positive relationship with local members of the General Assembly. So those were the top three successes, there's some others that, um, folks could certainly review, or if the board would like me to read more, I can. Um, and then the top, top six items of greatest concern was, uh, the board regularly recognizes student accomplishments at board meetings, and that's something that the board has addressed and, and put some plans in place, and I've, uh, just, for our work, I've been working with the principals to get a list of those folks together, we've got some recent successes. Uh, the board recognized staff accomplishments, and the board has sufficient time and opportunity to review the agenda and supporting materials before a board meeting. Uh, and then actually, there were two more that were, that had the same discrepancy, so I will share those. Uh, the board regularly solicits input from the community when establishing a future vision of the district, and the board ensures that an effective evaluation system is in place for the superintendent and all employees.
Any discussion on this item? One thing that I would like to request is that as you are going through this str- strategic plan, some of these items that may apply to like development of the strategic plan, like, um, the recognition maybe, or something about the student and staff recognition, things like that, to certainly, uh, see if y'all could put that into some of the guidance of the strategic plan, um, or the framework, or even the surveys, things like that, to see if we can get some feedback regarding that, um, from an external view, just not our own internal view ourselves, but it'd be great to hear some external views of those things too, where they would potentially apply. Um, so I think overall, um, it gives some items that maybe we need to work on, or we, we all think that, or some of us think we need to work on, and some of, some things that are, uh, good accomplishments or things that we do well. Um, and as we all know, nobody's perfect, so, and even no board is perfect, so it's good to give us some targeted items to work on, um, certainly in the coming year or years. Um, so, and hopefully those surveys, like, the surveys that are out there, one of the things that was on there too was like about the solicits input, I think. Um, with this five-year strategic plan, that's kind of a big deal to kind of launch us into now, we, how we can, another opportunity for us to get.
Absolutely.
Input from the community or, um, our stakeholders at large, so.
So rate student success was also on the survey as well.
Yes, so those kinds of things I think are great, the, I think the strategic plan is, is probably kind of hand-in-hand launching with this to be able to give us some ways to address these things, so.
Agreed.
Um, so, um, I look forward to seeing how we kind of develop and grow the strategic plan and, and the input we get from the external views too. So, uh, certainly appreciate, go ahead.
Um, I, I just wanted to say, on, on the items we do well, I, um, I have to call out the fact that the, the board is able to disagree on matters, should still maintain an attitude of mutual respect and trust, and once a decision's been made, all members of the board respect that decision. The board speaks with one voice. Those both rate six in our perception and our, of, of how well we function as a board and the importance of this as a board, and I just want to say thank you to each member of this board for acting this way, and then our evaluation of each other of ourselves shows that, because there are other school boards in the state where this does not exist at all, um, or in varying degrees of success, and, and I just appreciate being on board where we can do that and have those conversations, and then it, it just shows that we are moving forward. Um, and then, Dr. Horrell, I know, as I've visited another board, you and I have talked about, that's one of the things, I'll own that, that, that was one of the things I regret dislocate is recognizing student achievement at a board meeting. I love that our sister school board, or our sister school board, Turbantown, I got to go visit, that, but that's an intentional part of every board meeting. They bring in staff and students to recognize. I mean, the last board meeting I watched, for other reasons, that was forty-five minutes into their meeting before they actually got to the agenda, because they were talking about all those things. I don't know that I would spend forty-five minutes in a meeting doing that, but a few minutes, I think, is definitely worth the time.
Well, now, I, I'd like to say that our, um, our social media presence when it comes to students' achievements is strong, um, and gets that out, you know, Lakeland School System or your own, um, supers, um, Facebook and, um, the, the schools. One of the things that I, that I think is so cool to see, especially for the older kids, is when those, um, when those, um, posts pop up that are, so it's as class is doing such and such, because the older the kids get, the less of that you see. And that's, those are some of the day-to-day accomplishments that may not win an award, but they're the kinds of things that make the differences in a lot of kids' lives, and I think y- you all and our principals and people on the ground do a great job of that, and I know we have discussed too, to what extent do we want to, you know, we don't want to guilt people into feeling like, oh, they've got to come to the board and need to be recognized, so we have to find, um, a balance there too, because these are the people who are busy doing all the things on all the days, and so that makes it a little bit harder to have people come in and be recognized at all the, all the meetings, but I, I do think our social media is really, really good at capturing a lot of those things.
I agree.
Any more discussion on this, I don't, I don't think we have to take any action.
You don't, no, you've met the requirement of your policy and.
Okay, alright, so we don't need to have this on our agenda for next week, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So this item will not be on our agenda next week, next item.
Uh, next item is discussion on the TSBA Legislative and Legal Institute.
I don't think this requires any action on our part, this is just a placeholder to make sure that we're ready for next week's. And then every.
No, this is the Legislative and Legal Institute, not the, not the leadership.
This is the February one. So this is the ones that used to be down on the hill, yes.
Correct.
Ah, okay.
We've sent information, and I think I've got a response from a few people, we have booked hotel rooms for everyone, just in case. We just need to know everybody wants to.
What is the date?
I think it's linked in.
Twelve.
It's February twelfth and thirteen.
And that's.
It just said overnight on the twelfth, and then the morning of the thirteenth is in here.
So I'll go ahead and let you know, I will not be there. I'll be a lot more reliant.
I did, uh, but not. Different spot.
Yeah.
So are you saying no?
I'm, no.
Yes, you're saying no. Right, is that?
I will not be attending the agenda.
Alright, so if everybody, if anybody else who has or hasn't responded, we'll get that information over to her, and then that will take care of our, um, registration for that. Also, just as an, uh, I, I think you will have information for everybody on travels. Okay, so somebody will have arrangements for TSBA for next week on anything they need to do as far as travel arrangements.
Still do the same thing like you've done before, send us an email.
Probably better than that.
So just the, for the public's awareness, uh, next week is TSBA convention and, uh, this is.
Leadership conference.
Leadership conference and convention. So I believe the whole board is attending the annual TSBA, so it's where the school boards from all across the state come. Convention, we vote on legislative items to be able to have our TSBA representatives support those things in Nashville, and all those things are done next week as an entire delegation from across the state of Tennessee. So just as a summary as to what we're talking about for travel purposes. So everybody just be aware and make sure you check your email before you go so you have what you need for travel arrangements. All right, so this item does not need to be on our agenda for next week, correct?
That's also correct.
Okay, so it will be removed from our agenda for next week. All right, the next item is, go ahead, Dr. Horle.
It's the review of policy manual, section four.
As always, if there's any policies from board or any other policies that anybody would like added to the agenda, email Dr. Horle if there is any that we need to review or any suggested changes. Yes, ma'am.
I kind of, I was trying to jump in on the Legislative and Legal Institute, because we kind of jumped over the calendar. The calendar part that's going with consent, it was just the fact that the Legislative and Legal Institute is on February twelfth, so that's the proposed calendar change that will be on the consent agenda, because it sounds like everyone will be out of town, whether they're at the, at TSBA Legal and Legislative Institute or elsewhere, so that was the, just FYI, that's why that change in February was listed.
Did we have a change in June that we needed to discuss at all?
We did, and from the feed of Ms. Childs asked me about some data in June that she was going to be unavailable. The feedback I got, the consensus was that that's a bit far out for folks to know if they themselves would be available, so I think that's something we want to keep on the radar, or the board can obviously discuss it at the next meeting, but.
Okay, so we will potentially maybe revisit in January or so, when everybody gets closer, maybe has their spring or summer calendars or whatever.
That's kind of the sense that I got, that folks were open to the idea, but didn't want to schedule something that they might not be able to attend in order.
Okay, so then that'll just stay for this. All right, I am clear. So if there's any, are there any policies that anybody would like to discuss from section four?
I contacted my team, the team of Bay and Kim Lewis. This is kind of a big section because it's instructional services, and there's been a lot of, you know, with the growth of the high school and everything, so I gave them till next week to kind of look over this section, because there is so much, this section is instructional services, so if there's anything that they note, we will talk about it next week.
Okay, so if you'll just send it over to Dr. Horle for any items, that'd be great. All right, next item.
That's it, we've got announcements.
So are there any announcements?
There's a big announcement this week, it's Veterans Day programs at both schools, which is a big deal. I know both schools are doing a lot to prepare because it's a huge program, both schools so wonderful, makes me cry when I think about it, because I've loved it since my kids were little, and I still love going to the programs at both schools, so it's a very, just, it's remarkable, the work they do at both schools, with those programs, so really exciting week at both schools for, just to celebrate our veterans and celebrate our country, so. Are there any other announcements?
The play starts this week.
It does? Yeah, there's a, yeah.
Thursday, Thursday's the first night.
All right, hearing none, I guess all in favor of adjournings, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.